Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call a December 7th Town Council meeting to order if you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Aye, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you can please remain standing for a moment of silence for our men and women serving here and abroad and for the 80th Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day to all the men and women who served our country and lost their lives that day. You can please be seated. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Meeting of Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. Councillor Hume.
Here.
Councillor Ringus.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Here.
Councillor Flaherty.
Here.
Councillor Sasha.
Here.
Councillor Connors.
Here.
Councillor O'Brien.
Present.
Councillor Berika.
Here.
Councillor Mackin.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We do have Councillor O'Brien via remote tonight, so all votes will be via roll call vote. We have many people here in attendance, as you can see, lots of great things to announce and recognize a lot of individuals. The first is the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions, the travel boys soccer team. This is a tournament of champions from each travel league in the state. We have with us tonight Coach Mark Smith and John Gibbons. It's nice to see many of the student athletes here with us tonight because of COVID. We haven't had everybody here in a while, so normally we'd have you up, we'd all line up, we'd shake your hands, but what I'm going to do tonight, we have the boys' travel team and the BHS state championship dance team with us tonight. We're going to call the coaches up for the dance team, we're going to call the senior parents up, we're going to have them hand them out, and then we'll do pictures in front of the stage. I did talk to a few of you tonight, so that's how we're going to do it. So if I can have Coach Mark Smith and Coach John Gibbons come right up here into the middle. We want to recognize each of the young men with us tonight. They will be getting a citation from the Town Council. It's recognized by the, in each commendation states, "The Braintree Town Council in recognition of each player and coaches is recognized by the Braintree Town Council for winning the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions, which is a tournament of champions from each travel league in the state. Congratulations on your hard work and dedication," is signed by each one of the councils. So Coach Mark Smith, Coach John Gibbons, here you go. I will hand each of these to you, and I'll read each of the boys' names as they come up, if you could present them with their certificate. If we could have Cameron Confaloni. Congratulations, Cameron. Yeah, go ahead in front of the stage and we'll take a picture. Huh? Cameron Maloney. Kelly and Dougherty. Aiden Lau. If you have your jersey with you tonight, bring it up for the picture. That's a great, you should be proud of your uniform and all that, so bring that up with you. I see some of them in their seats. Who's not here? Okay. And Kayiki Silva is not here. Congratulations to him. Matthew Visser is not here. Is not here. Congratulations, Matthew. Oh, Kayiki Silva, come on up. And Kellen Zhu is out. So congratulations to all the young men. If you want to come up here, you want to show your.
Say a couple of words.
Yeah, we'll do the picture and then we'll come back. We'll come up here, we'll do a picture. Do you guys want to go up?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll all go up. If parents, you want to come up and take a picture, come on down. There's been a motion for a five-minute recess? A second? There's been a motion for a five-minute recess? A second? 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 Okay, now I'm going to open it up for comments from the council. Councillor Ringus, go ahead.
Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. Congratulations on such an enormous achievement. You guys are basically the state champions of Massachusetts. I know you went out to Lancaster in June. You had a great season. I got a chance to see so many games out there, and I know you had a, just an overall, the ability of you guys sort of to come together and what you achieved is amazing, and obviously congratulations to Coach Smith and Coach Gibbons. Nice seeing Coach Gibbons in a tie right there. Mark, if you could, in addition, Mark, in addition to being the coach of this championship-winning team, is also the president of the entire Braintree travel soccer program. So, Mark, could you talk a little bit about the travel soccer program and the success that we saw last year with a lot of the teams? Obviously, you guys going the whole distance.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank you all for having us here and congratulating not just the boys' team, but the dance team as well. Lots of great student athletes here in the town, and they actually got to see me wearing pants for a change, which I don't think any of them have ever seen before. With regards to travel program this year, out of 18 playoff divisions, we sent a representative in 13 out of the 18 divisions. Of the 13 divisions that we entered a team in the playoffs, we had eight teams playing on championship Sunday in the finals. Of those eight teams, six advanced to the Massachusetts Tournament of Champion, which is by far the largest in the league. We outpaced the second-largest showing from South Shaw Soccer League was two teams from, I believe, Weymouth. Out at M-Talk, we had mixed success, but we did get three teams, out of the six teams, three teams advanced to playing in championship Sunday out at M-Talk. Councillor Ringus's team, the girls' U-12 first division team, and we had another girls' team, a girls' eighth grade championship team that unfortunately lost in PKs after drawing 1-1 with a few minutes left. And then, obviously, these boys were crowned championships, champions of the state for the year. So we had a, first of all, congratulations to you guys. And overall, we had a, you know, we had a really strong season, and we're very happy with it, you know? We have a ways to go to rival towns like Needham and stuff like that, who crowns multiple championships, champions every year, but we're headed in the right direction. We'll get them.
It's great to hear. So thank you again to you for all the work that you do, not on behalf of just these guys, but on behalf of the whole town that's running that program. You do a wonderful job, and it shows in the success that we've had, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Hume. I just want to say congratulations to the young men for their championship and their hard work, and we're blessed in the town of Braintree. We have such wonderful sports programs, and I want to congratulate the parents who do all the hard work to take their kids to the sporting events. Thank you so much, and to the coaches, thank you so much, and congratulations, everybody.
They're not, they're not just great athletes, they're great people, they're great human beings, every one of them, they're great. They're awesome kids, and they're the type of kids that are going to lead your classes and everything else that's, you know, we're raising some really good men in this town.
Great, thank you. Councillor Mackin.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for being here, and I'd be remiss if I did not give a special congratulations to my neighbor, Amon Maloney. I've known him since he was a baby. I've watched him grow up, so you're making the Highlands proud, buddy. Stand up and take a bow. Get up, Amon.
That's a new shade of red for you.
Anybody else? Good. All right, congratulations to the coaches and all you young men, student athletes. It's no easy task being an athlete and on top of that tackling all your schoolwork, so congratulations, keep it up. We look forward to seeing you in the future, and thank you to all the parents, too, for getting you to your practices, to your games, because without the practice and hard work, it wouldn't be possible and you wouldn't be here tonight receiving this commendation. So job well done to all of you. Congratulations. All right, you're welcome to stick around, or you can leave, because I do know it's a school night. Moving on, we have the state championship BHS dance team. They won the Massachusetts School Administrators Association Dance State Tournament on November 20th in both the Palm and Jazz divisions. I don't believe the coaches are here. Did they come in at all while we? Okay, so what we're going to do is call up the senior parents to hand out the commendations to the dancers. I'll have you come up to the podium first and just announce yourself and who your senior dancer is.
My name is Janine Morehan, and Deirdre Morehan is my senior.
Deb Shaw, and my senior is Hannah Shaw.
Carrie Ryan, and my senior is Trisha Ryan.
My name is Jimmy Fleming, and my senior is Maggie Fleming.
And Deb Shaw is also our very own Town Clerk, Sue Samino's sister.
All right, I'm going to have the four of you come up, pass these out. We're going to do the same thing we did with the soccer team. If each of you will pass these out, and then we'll meet in front of the stage. I'm going to, yeah. Okay, first, nope, that's, yep. Kate Clancy. Who? Okay. Dougherty? Okay, Caitlin Dougherty, she is not here, but congratulations to Caitlin. I think we've had the whole family of Morehans before us, right? It's a dancing family. Ava Picard is not here, but congratulations to Ava. Samantha Quigley. Samantha's not here either, so congratulations, Samantha. Clerk Samino's niece. And I just want to recognize the senior captains. Deirdre Morehan. Patricia Ryan. And Hannah Shaw. We're going to do pictures in a minute, because we're going to take a recess, but if we're just going to make some comments first, I will open it up to the council for comments. Councillor Ringus, go ahead.
Congratulations, ladies, on your achievement. If I'm not mistaken, is this back-to-back? Are we, are we two? Deirdre?
There's too many to count.
Yeah, three back-to-back.
Three, I'm sorry, three back-to-back, all right. Well, congratulations to you. Congratulations, I know your coaches couldn't be here, but congratulations to them and thanked them for all the work they put in. Obviously, parents sort of jumped right in here to help out, and I think it's a testament, like we said with some of the boys in the soccer team, that it's the parents that get you guys to practice, it's when you're little, and it's the parents that are there to support you. So congratulations to the parents as well. Braintree is very proud of what you've done for the high school and what you've done over the past three times, so thank you.
So I think this is three in a row, but I think this is one of the teams, the dance teams, that has had more state championships in the course of Braintree High School than any other team, and I've always said they don't get to seem to get the recognition that they deserve. I know your team works probably harder than most sports teams. It's a two-season sport, I don't know that many people know that, so we're hoping we'll see you back after the winter sports. Are all of you returning to the winter? Yes? Okay, great. But I've had the opportunity to see many of your competitions. I did not get to this year, because I was out of town, but the sportsmanship and the strength and the talent that all of you display is amazing. The program through the years has just grown, and I look forward to seeing you all in the future. I know there's been some Braintree High alumni who've gone on to dance professionally, and I think that's a true testament of the commitment of the dancers and the sport that all of you are a part of. So congratulations, well done. There's been a motion for a five-minute recess? A second to all those in favor? Huh? We're going to do pictures, so stay up there, ladies. We're going to do pictures, but we're going to take a five-minute recess, because all of you don't have to stay after all of this. All right, we are going to get back to the agenda. Moving on to item 04221. For this item, I am going to turn it over to Councillor Connors, who can best present this.
So I just want to say I'm extremely grateful to be able to do this tonight as one of my last acts as Town Councilor, my last meeting, to present Quinlan Connors, who happens to be my son, with the town recognition for becoming an Eagle Scout for Troop 22 in Braintree Math. So Quin, can you come up for a minute? That's Derek, and he is really excited. Mr. Connors, could you tell us a little bit about what you did for your Eagle project for the Town Council, quickly?
Sure. I've had a grant for a bond. We did a lot of work. There, we did bog bridges, we did replacing some planks, we did a water bar, a little conservation area, and some other small stuff. It was a pretty good thing to do. It was something to do over the summer. So I worked on it, I worked hard, I did a lot, and I had to get a bunch of approvals. I had to get a bunch of fundraising. I got over $1,500 for the town of excess funds. So it was a good leadership opportunity as well, so.
Great job. Thank you. You have to present it, right? Do I need a mic? Should I just take my mic? Is Bill going to yell at me? The Braintree Town Council in recognition of Quinlan Connors is recognized by the Braintree Town Council for attaining the Boy Scouts of America highest award. An Eagle Scout. Congratulations. That's all I can say.
We will do a picture. Come on up. Hey, congratulations to you. I know this is no easy task. We've had a few Eagle Scouts before us, and each project always gets better, and there's quite an amount of time and effort that goes into it, so we congratulate you and thank you, because all the citizens of Braintree will benefit from the work that you did with your project, and I thank you for that. So congratulations, and thank you to your mom for bringing this to us tonight. I'm sure that was quite an honor for both of you. Anybody else? Councillor Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations, you know, we're here tonight with the dance team, the soccer club, and we're here with an Eagle Scout that, you know, really, you know, it's just, that does, I've had the opportunities to have several Eagle Scouts come before the council, and the projects they work on for the town, the dedication, the hard work, and it's just, it's wonderful, and I want to say thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. How many hours is it that you have to do your Eagle project now? Is there a settlement still?
No, but it was at least like 40 hours planned and all that stuff.
That's phenomenal. So the work you did, it did so much for those, for that area, obviously, to improve it, to allow, what we've seen during COVID is the ability to get outside and sort of do things, and so it's these type of projects that mean so much to the community as a whole, so thank you for the work that you did. Obviously, your mom put a lot of time and effort in as well, we know.
She did most of it herself.
Did he? Well, that's awesome, that's even better. But mom made sure he got there, and I know mom's very proud of that. This, when I was growing up as a Boy Scout, I was in Troop 67. Troop 22 used to be our rivals. 67 isn't around anymore, but we used to compete at different Klondike Derbies, and I can tell you, when I got my Eagle Scout, still, it's something I still keep on my resume to this day. When I was doing my interviews for law school, it was something that was brought up to me by the admissions officer that had gotten my Eagle Scout, because it does definitely shows people in the workforce, people in schools are applying to you, that you have a work ethic, and that really stands out by getting this award. So congratulations, you're one of the very few people to achieve that honor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item, 04323, Council President Recognition. We have two council members, who this will be their very last council meeting. They are moving on to bigger and better things. We have Councilor Donna Connors, District 3 Councilor, who has served District 3 residents for the last two years, and District 2 Councilor Steven Sasha, who has served for the last two years. I just wanna thank both of you. I know I've said this before, when people step up to serve, we have over thirty-seven thousand residents in the town of Braintree, and there's very few people who step up and serve. We don't always have to agree on everything, but you came before, you stepped up, you put yourself out there to run, and I commend you for that, and for all the work that you did on the council and all the committees, so congratulations to both of you. You're getting a commendation that Councilor Donna Connors, Councilor Steven Sasha is recognized by the Braintree Town Council for your service and dedication to the town of Braintree as your district counselor for 2020 to 2022. So congratulations to both of you, and thank you. Councilor Ryan.
You know, two years ago, we had, there was a lot of activity in the town, and a lot of, there was a lot of residents that were involved with the town, there was a lot going on with zoning, and a lot of different issues, and the town council had the biggest turnover ever. We had, we had five new councilors come onto the council, and I didn't know what to expect. There was, there were a lot of new faces and a lot of new personalities, and I just wanna say that it's been a pleasure working with Steve and with Donna. They took their job as being town councils very seriously. I had the good fortune of working on the Ways and Means Committee, and I think Councilor Hume said, Charlie, will you please go be on the Ways and Means Committee? There's gonna be a lot of new people on it, make sure everything goes okay, and those weren't her exact words, but the Ways and Means Committee did not need me on it, because all the new councilors that got on it did an unbelievable job, right with Donna and Steve. They did their homework, they took things very seriously, they asked so many questions regarding the budget. We were never more well-represented on the Ways and Means than I think in the last two years with the questions and all the due diligence and all the hard work that everyone did. So I appreciate you folks stepping up, you stepped up, it's very, it's hard and difficult to put your name on the line when you put your name up for an election day, and you're at the polls on election day, and you folks did it, and you did a great job, and I wanna say that it was a pleasure serving with both of you, and I wish you the best of luck in the future, thank you very much.
As I know Councilor Connors will not be happy if I'm not, but, you know, I've, since we started, I'm happy to call you both friends, I think we've had a good time together, it was, you know, you were always very supportive, I know we talked to each other a lot, and I'm gonna miss you, it really was a pleasure serving with you, so thank you, and good luck, and what's next?
Councilor Babrika.
Senator Hume, I also wanna echo Councilor Ryan's sentiments, serving with both Councilor Sasha and Councilor Connors on the Ways and Means Committee. Some of the things I'm taking away from my time serving with you, and thank you, you know, Councilor Sasha, you were a consistently fierce advocate for public participation and the public process, and I want people to, you know, appreciate the importance of that, because without public input, there's not much more to it, right? And you always had that top of mind for your constituents and the entire town, so thank you for that. And Councilor Connors, I am going to definitely miss your thorough, thoughtful, keen eye for detail, and really always committing to digging in and doing the hard work, and it's a lot of work, but you put in the time and the effort, and it will be much missed, and it was greatly appreciated, so many thanks.
Councilor Ringus.
Councilor Sasha, Councilor Connors, thank you. I know Donna told me before the meeting that she did not want us to talk long, and I'm within throwing distance, so we'll keep it short. But Donna, I knew you from before, knowing of your involvement at Scouts, and being the snack bar lady at Braintree Soccer, but you show, when you ran for council, I was looking forward to working with you, and I think you rose to the occasion. You, I think people have echoed, just echoing sentiments at this point, but the thoroughness that you brought, your attention to detail was second to none, and you will be missed. Councilor Sasha, we had the ability to sort of work together a little bit prior to your involvement on the council, when you were involved in a lot of the zoning issues that we saw two years ago, and I've been lucky enough to have you serve as my vice chair on ordinance and rules, and your sort of thoroughness in digging into sort of the nitty-gritty of what we are dealing with, and your sort of subject matter mastery of various issues related to zoning is something that will definitely be missed on the ordinance and rules subcommittee. I'm so thankful for the insight that you gave to me through your work there, and you will be missed as well. So thank you both for your service, like we've said, anytime you put your name out there on a ballot, it can be a frightening proposition, and you both carried it through and represented your district as well, so thank you.
Councilor Flaherty.
I'll share my colleague's words. It takes a lot of, it takes a lot of heart to run for office, to put yourself out there to public scrutiny, and, you know, work to meet so many people, and listen to so many people, and both of you guys did that beautifully, and for the right reasons. And you have worked very hard on the council, and done an excellent job. Donna, you have always had, you know, you've been a friendly face, and you've had a kind word for everybody, and I, you know, that is wonderful, especially when there's sharp disagreements. And, you know, I've really come to appreciate your financial acumen and your relentless pragmatism. I know that that has benefited the council a lot. And Steve, you know, you are a person who just, you dot every i and you cross every t, you're very detail-oriented, and sometimes you bring to light details that I have overlooked, and I appreciate that in the work that you've done. And I think also sometimes you think outside the box, and that is also a critical skill to bring to the council, because sometimes, you know, we just, any group of people who are thinking through an issue need a person like that. So thank you for being those people, and I do wish you both very well as you move on to the next, whatever the next thing is.
Do either of you wanna say anything? I wanted to give you that opportunity, sure. Alright, moving on to approval of minutes from November 3rd, 2021.
I move to approve the minutes of November 3rd, 2021, Madam President.
Better motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan, Clerk Zemino, roll call, vote please. Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha? That's nine in favor, zero opposed. That is unanimous, thank you. Now, moving on to communications, 04421, Council President, Braintree Police Department. We have with us tonight Chief Marc Dubois, Tim Cahoon, the Deputy Police Chief of Operations, and I know Michael Want could not be here, correct? Michael Want is the Deputy Police Chief of Administration. Well, welcome, Chief, I asked you to be here to give us an update on all the things, it's been a busy year in the Braintree Police Department, and I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much for having us. So I asked the two deputies, who by the way are just outstanding, and just, it's a great team that we have. So Mike was gonna talk about all the administrative stuff that he does, and it's kind of out of order with some of the initiatives that we have, but what happened after the June incident with KITT, we were visited by an organization called Brotherhood of the Fallen, which is a Boston Police Department organization, which ultimately made a huge impact on us, and we joined. We were invited to join, so it's a charitable organization, it's a charter member, Boston is one of the seven original charters. So the charter members are Chicago, New York City, Aurora, Colorado, Fort Worth, Texas, Suffolk County, New York, Dallas, and then Boston. So we're part of the Boston chapter. The mission statement of the Brotherhood is that they send members, officers, to every funeral of any law enforcement officer that was murdered in the line of duty in the United States. And just as we join, as we were invited, every officer pays a hundred dollars, and all through charitable events and giving, they raise a significant amount of money to pay for the flight, the hotel, all the travel expenses, so there's zero cost for any of the members, other than the commitment on the police department side is to allow them to go. So today Deputy Want went to Georgia, or yesterday, and he flew back this evening for an officer. They've had eight police officers killed in Georgia this year. And then on Thursday, we have another officer going to Mesquite, Texas. So that's why Mike's not here, and that's one of the initiatives that we've kind of been involved with, probably towards the end of the summer, which is just a really, it's a really positive organization to be a part of, so I just wanted to share that with you, and why Michael's not here. So I'm just gonna give you a kind of a big overview, and try and be very quick, honestly. Deputy Cahoon is gonna go over operations, some stats, and some incidents that we talked to President Hume about, that we thought would just highlight some of the things that aren't public at all, but kind of significant for the community, and just things that you should be aware of. First, probably the biggest pressing thing is obviously budget stuff that we talk about, and currently the overtime is gonna be a significant request for the supplemental budget for us. And we work weekly with the mayor's office, and we meet with the mayor every week, and we go over, you know, what we can do to mitigate some of this stuff. But the latest projection that Sergeant Chambers does, which is basically, kind of covers all the financial aspects for us, is from November 27th, his projection is 1.156 million, so 1.2 million probably is where we're gonna be around for a supplemental request. And the reason for that is, what I'll get into, is the breakdown of the staff of the police department, if you're not aware, is just obviously, chief, two deputies, we have seven lieutenants, eleven sergeants, and sixty-two patrol officers. So we currently have eighty-three staff, and we're in the process right now of hiring four new police officers. That process started about a month ago, with the anticipation of sending them to a May Police Academy, which means they'll graduate and be actually working in the police department around this time, probably January next year. So the process does take us like well over a year, from start to finish where they show up. So those four positions are currently trying to be filled. And I just kind of wanna remind you, in 2020, we had, I feel like a pretty significant reduction in overtime, and that was really based on a full complement of staff, and really allocating all the patrol resources so that we weren't filling overtime shifts, and we made, you know, a really good dent in the prior year's request for overtime. And that was done basically with really the minimum, without some of the extras that we would like to have, to, you know, for services for the community, say like a traffic unit, or more school resource officers. We have one school resource officer who, right, this year has been just overwhelmed, and it's just a big demand for her services in all the schools, and just that age group. So because of our injuries that started in June, it's kind of impacted this whole fiscal year. And I just wanted to highlight what I'm talking about, just so you're aware of it is. So we have one sergeant who's out with a shoulder injury, that operation surgery, that was work-related. We had another officer that's out with a hand injury, that had an operation that's work-related. We have another officer out with a knee injury, that was work-related, surgery. We had three officers from the June incident that are obviously out, and, you know, not projected to be back anytime soon. We have another officer out for non-work-related injuries for about three months. We have a dispatcher that was out from June, returning next week, that was a medical condition, not work-related. And also a dispatcher that was activated by the National Guard on two separate occasions, basically from June until, he just returned, I saw him today, he was working in the prison system recently. And then I think we're very proud of Lieutenant Dave Delpapa, who left us unfortunately, but now is the police chief in Abington. Great move for him, and a great move for their community, a big loss for us, but another, that's a lieutenant's position that is vacant. And then also, we have one officer that's gonna be retiring that we know of in February. So all those open positions, plus the four that we don't have because we're hiring for, is just kind of, how many, it's about fifteen people out of the eighty-six that are out. So that's kind of how we've gotten to where we're asking for, you know, where we're projected for the supplemental. Get the bad news out of the way, now I'll give you some of the good news, some of the things that, the highlights that we have, and I'm just gonna hit a few of them, because we have so many talented officers that kind of go out on their own, and just kind of really fixate on the areas that they're really strong with, and we have Family Services that deals with any mental health crisis, drug addiction, any drug issues, homelessness, juvenile issues, the school resource officer falls under that. And we, and with that, that unit, they deal with the Department of Public Health a lot. In July, we were awarded a grant that's called the Crisis Intervention Training and Technical Assistance Center. It's CIT, T-TAC, and it's, the grant was awarded July 1st, and Braintree's considered a hub for training for the South Shore and Cape Cod, so we're one of very few hubs in the state. And what that brought us is a full-time CIT trainer, and she's also available to go out on calls, so she'll assist on any mental health crises, or even any outreach stuff that we need to do. And also, it provides for a part-time assistant to help coordinate all the training. The grant was awarded, it was $265,000, and that also pays for all the officer overtime that's involved with the training. So as an example, they teach mental health first aid to officers, it's an eight-hour class, they've taught it in Bourne, Situate, Marshfield, and many times in Braintree, so. They also teach Crisis Intervention Course, which is forty hours, and they've done two of those trainings so far this year. Also, we have the Jail Diversion Program, which is a mental health counselor, which we were awarded a hundred thousand dollars for, that got a little increase this year. And they work in Braintree, she works in Braintree Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays, she works in Milton. So we have, you know, really good use of the two of them throughout the week. And we also just received the forty thousand dollar grant for a mental health training with the intent to train all the Braintree officers in the forty-hour Crisis Intervention Course. So we have them in-house, they'll pay for all the backfill with this forty thousand dollars, so we can put everybody through this forty-hour course in the police station. And like I said, that's all trained through the grant. And that's all coordinated through Family Services, which they just do outstanding work, and like a bunch of the other different divisions with us, they're overwhelmed with work, there's plenty of it to go around for them, but they focus on this area, and they have such great relationships, they've really, they've really gotten those grants pretty easily this year. So another thing that we established is the Marine Unit, which I don't know if you're all aware of or not, but I was, I guess, made the Harbor Master, and the reason for that was so that we could create a Marine Unit, and just assign people to, you know, all those Marine duties. So with that, we coordinate with all the, you know, the surrounding communities, Quincy and Weymouth quite a bit. But Steve Wallace initiated a port security grant, so we received a grant for three hundred thousand dollars for a, we're purchasing a twenty-seven-foot walk-around safeboat with twin three-hundred horsepower engines. It's, I don't think they started building it yet, but we anticipate hopefully sometime over the summer we'll have it here. And that's capable of patrol, escorting tankers, and doing interdiction, and that's coordinated with Quincy and Weymouth also. So Lieutenant Lydon runs the Marine Unit, so a lot of the supervisors have ancillary duties, and that's what Lieutenant Lydon's doing. And with that, we've trained fourteen different officers in a forty-hour operator certification course, which is through the National Association of State Boating and Law Administrators, and it's basically the national standard for- It's basically the national standard for marine operations. We have two officers that are certified in tactical operations for boating, for operating boats. And what they do is they can escort the tankers in and out of port, along with the other communities and the Coast Guard. So it's just another, it's another option we have as far as, you know, port security. And then also, we have two officers that are trained in boat accident reconstruction, you know, which is a pretty unique skill set. But all these, all these programs were paid through the grant, so there's no cost to us. So we feel like we have a pretty significant Marine Unit now, which kind of stood up in about the last year. And then once we get the boat, we'll really be in good shape with that. Another kind of budget mitigation we did was the Parking Enforcement Officer. So we had to kind of, we removed that from our budget this past year. And we're working with the Commission on Disabilities. They funded like a pilot program for us to have the Parking Enforcement kind of replaced. And their concern was handicap violations, which there's plenty of. And so November 1st, that started, and it's been very successful so far. I just sent the first assessment to, or the first kind of detailed summary of their activity to the Council on Disabilities. So in February, they're going to reassess that, they might refund it again. That's something that, you know, we think is high need, is the Parking Enforcement, and this is somebody that's just dedicated towards that. And also, just to follow up with Prophoenix is a records management system, which is basically our computer system for everything we do, dispatch, reports, bookings, absolutely all the IT for us. And that's almost getting operational, we've still been working with the company. We made two payments, and now they're just still building the system. And then we're going to have to train everybody, obviously, probably in the next several months, and be up and running with that. But that was, it's a tremendous endeavor that Officer Wallace has been working on, just to work with the company. And then also, one of the big things that we've seen a major impact with us is the police reform, in posts, which you hear about, is the police officer standards and training. So they are working, that's a new state agency that's working with the Training Council, you know, Municipal Police Training Council, to coordinate all the required trainings that officers have. But there's also a lot of requirements that we are obligated to supply, Internal Affairs records dating back anybody that's working. So we were looking at 30 years' worth of records that we had to go through and put together in an Excel spreadsheet essentially, and submit to them. There's a whole bunch of things coming out that they're not clear on yet, because it's a new agency. So we kind of get updates weekly and just, it is, it's a big task, and that's still something that's kind of evolving. And that's kind of a big overview. I told them I wouldn't take too long, the mayor said I have to get out of here quick. She's going to like, she doesn't want to. But we are, we are going to have a police award ceremony on January 29th that we're going to have in here. We reserved the room that you're all going to receive an invitation to, I hope you can attend it. It's about two years' worth of awards, because we haven't been able to do anything. And I think that it's going to be very interesting, and there's a lot of great work that happens every day. And Tim's going to come up and give a few highlights on some of the issues that, incidents that we've had, and some of the statistics, just for kind of your awareness. So, thank you. Thank you. Can I close this? Is that okay? I'm not going to ruin any program or anything? All right. I usually don't need a microphone, because I'm fairly loud, but. Thanks for having us, I really appreciate it. It's been two years since Mike and I were promoted, so we haven't had the honor of standing in front of you yet. And obviously, Mike couldn't be here for the trip that he took, and we're thankful for him for doing that. I did pass out via Ms. Semino, the, the, some statistics, just to kind of give you a little context in some of the stuff I'm going to talk about. The problem with numbers is they don't tell the story, they just don't. The numbers are fairly consistent with the last year and even the years before that. A couple of variations here and there. Through 11 months, we're pretty close to what we were last year. Arrests are down a little bit, and I think that has something to do with the pandemic, because we weren't arresting as many people during the pandemic. And the flip side of that is some of the hearings are up a little bit. And, but again, they don't tell the story. So one of the things that I was thinking about when Madam President invited us to come address you guys was how to tell the story of what we do every day. And it's not through numbers. But the overdoses, if you look at that, there's a story there. So year-to-date, 2021, we have 76 incidents of overdoses, which is remarkable. And it's something we've been dealing with for a number of years, dozen years, anyway. But 27 Narcan saves. That's somebody's son, daughter, dad, mom, that's a lot. We've lost seven people, seven people have died from overdoses, year-to-date, down a little bit from last year. But those numbers certainly tell a story, and we talked a little bit about the grants we were able to secure with the Family Services Unit, they do follow up on all of these overdoses. Our clinicians are involved with the overdoses and with the families as well. And, but it's something we still haven't really got a hold on, nobody has, particularly in the Commonwealth and across the country, is the opioid epidemic. But those numbers definitely tell a story. The other numbers for the calls for service, you can take a look at. But the mental health calls jump out too. Those are pretty consistent over the last three or four years, where we've had 390 mental health calls, meaning if officers are responding to somebody in distress. And when I talk a little bit about some of the incidents, you'll see exactly what these officers and clinicians are dealing with and people that are struggling out there. And that, we're usually the first ones to arrive. We're not the only ones, but we're usually the first ones to arrive. The highlighted incidents, I did this on purpose, there was a bunch of, we've had a lot of, I guess you'd call high-profile incidents. We had the shooting June 4th, where two of our officers were struck and Kit was killed. Going back a year, we had the Plaza Shooting, we've had another officer-involved shooting that I believe was 2020. And you've read about those incidents, you've seen them, you've probably seen news coverage of those. I wanted to dig into a couple of incidents that aren't public. And I wanted to do that because although extraordinary, they're not abnormal. They happen with an alarming frequency, actually. And not all of them are a terrible crime, some of them are actually good stories. So if you'll indulge me a little bit, I'm going to, I'm going to share with you four or five stories that kind of show you what our men and women in the Police Department are doing every day. So I'm not going to go in order that you have there, but all of these incidents are within the last couple of months, except for one, I'm reaching back about eight months, and there's a reason for that. But I wanted to share it with you, and it was on April 2nd, 2021, the Branch Police Department was called to respond to a person in a rental box truck who was threatening suicide. This is up on Forbes Road. The first responding officer found her seated in the truck with her back up against the passenger's door, her legs splayed out on the, on the drive, on the bench seat, and she had a knife to her throat. 10 officers responding, and that's important, because we had seven officers working. So how does that happen? We had seven patrol officers working. Well, we had people from Family Services, we had detectives, we had two supervisors show up, and we had guys from detail show up, and girls. So it just shows you the, that how invested these folks are. They show up to the call, the first officer tries to get her attention, he can't, she's not responding. There were people who actually called on scene that knew this female, and they actually had, the truck was locked, they had a set of keys. So the officers were able to get a set of keys. The group of officers set up on both sides of this truck, figuring what they're going to do next. They have to, there may be some intervention, hopefully they can talk her down, that type of thing. The sergeant decides he's going to open the driver's door to facilitate communication, try to de-escalate, see if we can get her to come out. So he opens that door. On the other side are officers that are set up in case they have to take emergency action. And this happens literally in seconds. So they have trauma kits, they have less lethal munitions on the other side. They have a combat-trained medic over there that happened to be a detective who was working. And the sergeant's engaging her, she's not responding at all. She's on the phone, she has a knife to her throat, and she says words to the effect of, "I love you." She almost makes a movement to hurt herself, and one of the officers on the driver's side engages her with a taser. The knife falls away, at the same time, they open the passenger door, she falls into the arms of the officers. Like, that's remarkable, and that happens with some frequency. And again, this isn't, this was eight months ago, and we didn't publicize it then because of the sensitive nature to it. But I thought it was important to kind of give you a glimpse of that. Another incident that just occurred a month or so ago in East Braintree. And again, it was, it was another person in distress, and it was a suicidal party. And this, except this person wanted us to shoot them. You've heard of suicide by cop. So a call comes into the station, a female screaming at the 911, they can't discern what she's saying, they send officers. The first officer to show up is like been on the job for a minute, like just off of FTO. And he's an excellent officer, he shows up, and he encounters a man on the front steps with a knife in his hand and an item behind his back, and he's yelling out the officer to shoot him. So not knowing what he has going on, this, again, brand-new officer, calmly transmits, says, "I need more help up here, I need to expedite," man has a knife, says he has a gun, he's saying he has a gun. The second officer arriving on scene deploys, jumps out of his cruiser, we have less lethal munitions in the cruiser, less than lethal in the form of a beanbag shotgun, we also have tasers. He deploys with the beanbag shotgun, he steps out, and what he sees is the same as the first officer. They try to engage him calmly in conversation, and he's not having it. They can't really discern what the object is behind his back, but he's saying it's a gun, you have to take his word for it at that time. And he lowers the center of gravity, brings the knife close, and they think he's going to charge. The less, the officer with less lethal deploys two rounds, knocking the knife away. Guy goes to the ground, they take him into custody safely. They load him up in an ambulance, our clinicians, Family Services, again, all involved. This happened, no more, start to finish, 90 seconds. So that's how quickly these things can happen on the street. In fact, we left the station, and we, when we were there, he was being loaded into the ambulance. That, and this was in East Braintree, very close to the police station. By the way, the black object he was holding was a remote control. October 28th, there's another incident. You can file this under Parents Worst Nightmare. An 18-year-old girl is getting her driver's test up at the DMV. The, she's with her mother, she gets done with the driver's test, she ends up in the car. Mother calls 911 screaming, "My daughter's unresponsive, she doesn't know what's going on." No pulse, no breathing, 18-year-old girl, no medical history that they know of. First officer finds her in that condition, gets her out of the car, initiates CPR, gets on the radio, "Need more units to expedite," gets Brewster, Fire Department. And five officers show up to that call, one was dispatched, five officers show up to that call, and a sergeant and a detective lieutenant show up to that call. Brewster shows up with their medics, they're fairly close, because they staged across the street. Braintree Fire all respond, they continue CPR, they load her into the ambulance. Two of the officers continue working on her in the ambulance with Brewster, and actually go to the hospital with her. And throughout this entire time, she's not breathing and she has no pulse. Thanks to the work of the officers, she regains a pulse, they give her a fighting chance, she's stabilized, and she survives. She's still got a long road ahead of her, this was in October. But those are the type of people you have working for you on the street. All right, here's a feel-good story for you. In October, it's, well, the first part of it isn't, but the last part of it is. In October, 12-year-old boy is riding his bicycle on West Street, he's going to his grandmother's house. While he's driving down the road on his bicycle, a car pulls over, cuts him off, the passenger gets out wearing a mask, threatens him, steals his bike, and tells him to shut his phone off, "Don't look at me, turn around, run that way towards Five Corners," which he does, he's terrified, he's a 12-year-old boy. Detectives end up picking up the case, they talk to the kid, they're very impressed with him, he gives a great description, he's just a wonderful kid, by all accounts. They were also become aware of similar instances occurring in Canton. So working with Canton detectives, they develop a suspect. When they develop the suspect, I think they, either in plain view or search warrant, they recover a bunch of stolen bicycles, one of which is this 12-year-old's from Braintree. The problem was it had been stripped clean, so it was not serviceable, and the kid's devastated. It was given to him by his father, and it had a lot of sentimental value. So one detective decides to call a local bike shop and tells her the story, they bring the bike in, the bike, they can't source the parts, can't do it, sorry. So not stopping there, she decides to raise funds in the Police Department, just in our building, to see if we can get him a new bike, it was like 700 bucks or whatever it was. Within a couple of days, she had more than enough money to go down to, I think, Landry's and buy the kid a bike, and on December 2nd, they presented this kid with a bike and enough money with a gift certificate. That's the investment, again, that these officers have in this community. And then I'll close with this one, because, you know, you guys got a long night ahead of you, and I could probably go on all night, as we both could, about bragging about our police officers. But just four days ago, 6:30 a.m., this is some of the things that happened. Officers are called to a pretty much a routine call of somebody at a stoplight who's passed out. 6:30 a.m., passed out, passenger's also passed out. They get up there, they attempt to raise the occupants, they can't. They finally raise the driver, the driver is lethargic, he rolls down the window, he's not responding to commands. The officer becomes concerned, because he's kind of reaching all over the place. And at one point, he actually reaches in, and the officer shuts the car up, because they don't want this guy driving away, because they believe he's in some kind of impaired condition. And he asks him to step from the vehicle, the guy will not, he's still reaching around, creating kind of a safety issue, we don't know what he's grabbing for, we don't know what's going on. And this officer opens the door and kind of grabs control of him, a little struggle happens. They start fighting a little bit, another officer helps, they bring him out of the vehicle, and he tries to take off, run, another officer kind of catches him. And it's a little bit of a struggle, they fall to the ground. And while falling to the ground, a loaded 9mm falls out of his pant leg. So they secure the weapon, they secure him, they take him into custody, and they end up getting a search warrant for the car, they discovered another loaded firearm in the car, and trafficking weight and cracked cocaine, oxycodone, $4,000 in cash. So that's 6:30 in the morning in Braintree Square. And we ran into the officers coming back from that call, and it's like, their shift starts at 6:30. That's not what they expected to do coming out of roll call. So this community's a lovely community, there's, I grew up here, I love it. It's still a great community, but we do have some of the issues that we deal with on a daily basis. And sometimes, those are very difficult to deal with. But we do have men and women across this Police Department that rise to the occasion, well, I shouldn't say rise to the occasion, what they do is they sink to the level of training. Because when crisis happens, you don't rise to the occasion, you sink to your level of training. And what I can say is these guys are as well-trained, guys and girls are as well-trained as any Police Department in the Commonwealth. And that was my main purpose for wanting to just bring you kind of up to speed on some of those things. By the way, the person who was arrested with that firearm was out on bail from a firearms, was caught by the State Police in Suffolk County, I think, in April. And he was also under indictment in another county for, I think it was a shooting, it was a firearm, salt and battery by means of a firearm, so I'm not sure if that was COVID that allowed him to be back out in the street, but those are some of the folks that we are dealing with, so. But thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your attention and indulging us for probably too long.
Not, not at all. Thank you Deputy Kahoon and Chief Dubois, I thought it was so important for both of you to be here, especially after the conversations we had a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to say, I think we do have the best Police Department in the state of Massachusetts. And it's because of the training, as you mentioned, tonight, but before. We see and hear little snippets of some of the incidents that your men and women handle in our community. And we are all safe in Braintree, it is a safe community, because of your training, your education, your leadership, and the commitments. It's not common for police officers to go in an ambulance with a patient. And the incidents that you cited, but the training, I know Deputy Kahoon, you said this to me weeks ago. We hear on the national news, and in so many communities, fatal incidents. And you said that there's always a non, you want a non-lethal outcome, and you've trained. And I think there's so many incidents that have happened in Braintree that, the one in October, helicopters all over Braintree. And the training that your men and women, and some of the things that you said to me that day, I was not aware of. I had no idea, the general public, I don't think, knows. The general public, I don't think, knows the extent of what Braintree police go through to keep everybody safe. That could have been a very different outcome. All these incidents, you said, could have been very different for both of you, for your men and women, and for residents of the Braintree. But the outcome was always a good outcome, and your numbers don't do it justice. There's over 18,000 incidents in Braintree from January 1st to December 1st, 18,000. That's a huge amount of number, but it doesn't tell the story. So I appreciate the details, and I would give you as much time as you want, you're always welcome back here. I thought it was so important. I never have an issue with supplementals, especially when it's for our police and fire and keeping the community safe and doing what you do, because your job is a 24-hour job, and the support that we give and the funding that we give is so important. It goes to the training, it goes to the equipment. Men in the incident earlier this year would have been a very different outcome had you not had the equipment that you had that day. So I thank you both for being here, I appreciate it. I'm thankful that you're all in the job that you're in, and I always say this, we're all safe and feel comfortable in Braintree, and we don't hear about the incidents because it's just taken care of. But I want to commend you both and extend this to your staff for all the work that you do. I appreciate everything that you do, and I thank you for it. I will open it up, so thank you for being here and for what you do every day. Counselor Ryan.
I just want to say thank you for being here tonight. I think we have great leadership in the police department, we have some homegrown leadership, and we have a chief that's doing a great job, and I want to say thank you so much. I see you folks dealing with issues all the time, tough issues, and you handle yourselves wonderfully, whether it's the day-to-day activities or on TV, when I see you on TV, like I did the other day. And, you know, I fully support the police department, and I'm going to, it's easy for me and for the town to support you folks, because you do a great job, and we're very lucky for the work that you do. So thank you, it's really great that you came in here. I thank the council president for asking you folks to come in, give us an update, I think it's something we should do more often on a regular basis, have you come in and tell us what's going on, and maybe bring some other people with you. So it's, and not only can we hear about what's going on, we're on TV, and all the residents can get a chance to hear what's going on, too. Some of the things you talked about, you know, the crisis intervention, I'd like to say you're ahead of the curve, but you're really not, it's something you have to be doing in this day and age, and I think it just shows that you folks understand, you get it, and you're trying to give your men and women the tools they need to do the right job, so I think that's great. So thank you for being here tonight, and keep up the great work, thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Ringus.
Thank you Chief Kahoon, I would just echo the sentiments of the president and Counselor Ryan. Braintree PD is top-notch, I think we all know that in this room, and you just highlighted it tonight. And I think the excellence that your offices demonstrate, that comes from the top. Deputy Kahoon, you're coming into the role, you've sort of embraced that. Deputy Chief Want obviously can't be here tonight, just a solid individual. I remember as a young DA, when Officer Want at the time was testifying, you knew you were going to have an easier day. He was just such a thorough guy, and he continues that in the new role that he is with. And Chief Dubois, the ability of you to, you know, continue the morale of the department when you're going through issues like this, or going through some of the other things that we see going on, that comes from the top, so I appreciate what you do. I'll use it as a little bit of a segue, because I missed some announcements at the beginning, but you touched on the fact that you guys, there's some feel-good stuff you do. Getting that youth back, his bike was probably a huge day for him. You're also very involved in other community actions, so I know that in the lobby of the police station currently, there is a box, and there's currently a call for toys for the Maj Crispin Center. They are collecting specifically toys for 8 years old to 16 years old, because of sometimes the ages that people forget about. And donations can be made 24 hours a day in the lobby, up through Thursday at 4:00, and specifically being sought as board games, sweatpants, sweatshirts and jackets, extra small to extra, extra large, makeup kits, jewelry kits, and sports team items. And every year at the annual Braintree Town Christmas Party, it's always a great sight to see the cruises come up with the blue lights, Brewster, and just the litany of gifts that we made, that we pile into the Granite Grill, and hopefully that will continue. So thank you for all that you do there. And I did also want to segue another announcement, I forgot at the beginning, I was sleeping a little bit, I think. You mentioned Officer Wallace a couple of times, and if I'm not mistaken, just very recently, Officer Steve Wallace was honored with the George Alhanna Award, and that was for, that's an annual award for bravery. George Alhanna was a state police trooper who lost his life in the line of duty back in February of 1983, and it's an annual award presented for bravery. And Officer Wallace received that award for his actions on January 25th of 2020, and that was before we all had to start wearing masks. But that was an incident at the Hingham Shipyard where he responded, and obviously continued the excellence that he performs in many roles that you mentioned here in Braintree, but bringing that to another community as well for his involvement there with mutual aid. So again, top-notch, thank you for the presentation, thank you for everything you do for Braintree.
All right, thank you both, good to have you here, you're always welcome back. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, 05421, Council President, Belt broadband sale to Comcast. We have with us tonight Bill Botijji, General Manager of Belt, and Municipal Light Board Member Tom Reynolds. So I don't know if everyone has heard, but Belt did sell their broadband Division 2 Comcast, so I invited Mr. Botijji and the commissioners here, one, to explain and give the facts of what happened, because I know there's some misinformation, I know there's some not-happy customers, myself included, I've been a broadband member forever, but in talking to you, Bill, I appreciate the decision, and I wanted to let you be here tonight and talk to the residents and get some information out there, and Fred with the Patriot Lagers here, hopefully he gets some good facts from you. Thanks for being here. Oh, and I would be remiss, so we always praise Belt after storms, and you've never here, but several weeks ago, there was that northeastern that ripped through so many communities in Massachusetts, many communities went without power for days, but not Braintree because of Belt. So now that you're here in person, we just want to send our appreciation and thanks to you for keeping the lights on in Braintree, and for the work that you do, the maintenance throughout the year, to keep the power lines safe, so thank you for that.
The employees really appreciate that, you know, during storms, they're out there in the tough weather, working through it, and they never quit until they're too tired to work, so that's why things get back so fast. So let me give you an overview of how we got to where we are with the sale of the Internet Division. So back in 1999, we entered the high-speed internet business, we were the first people in Braintree to offer high-speed internet. At the time, it was Time Warner Cable that only offered cable TV. So we got into that business to offer that as an alternative. And shortly after that, Comcast bought out Time Warner Cable. And shortly after that, we were requested by town meeting to enter the cable TV business to offer video, and so there's competition in town with now Comcast, and Comcast very shortly began offering high-speed internet. So over the period of about six years, we invested in our system, we upgraded the network, it's called the Hybrid Fiber Optic coax network, so we could increase speeds, offer video on demand, offer high-definition TV, you know, all the bells and whistles, then we finally offered phone, so we were a full triple-play company. We grew the business, so we had about 6,000 customers, a little less than half the customers in town. So in 2007, what happened was, we were, Comcast was aware of us, so obviously we were competing with them, but we were not really high on their radar. They're a national company, we're a little Braintree, they weren't investing a lot of money in marketing, so we were slowly taking customers from them, feeling pretty good about ourselves every month, taking 20 to 30 customers a month. In 2007, FiOS, Verizon FiOS, was given a license to be the third competitor in town. That was in 2007. They built out their fiber optic to-the-home network and got very aggressive with door-to-door marketing, with free TVs, lots of come-on deals to get customers to switch to them, which also woke Comcast up, and Comcast said, oh boy, there's real competition. And it wasn't just Braintree, FiOS went into Boston, a lot of towns around us. Braintree was one of the few, though, that had three competitors. So starting in 2007, we pretty much took a bloodbath. We had people returning equipment to our lobby every day, we had so many boxes coming in the door, we didn't know what to do with them. So, but we carried on, the employees worked hard, the customers love us, but we drifted down, and we lost between 3,500 and 4,000 customers. To the point, last January, we were down to about 2,500 customers. You all know we exited the cable TV business back in 2019, and the reason we did that was all the money we collected for offering cable just went in one door and out the other. The program has got all the money. And being a small operator, we really couldn't compete for those programming fees. Comcast owns Disney and owns most of, they own NBC, they own most of the programming, so they had a big competitive advantage in the cable, excuse me, the cable TV side of the business. So we exited cable, tried to make a go at it, go at it with just internet. Now, in all this time, our infrastructure's getting old, and we frankly didn't have the money to invest in it, to bring it up to modern standards. That network is 24 years old, and it's 30-year-old technology. So I asked the broadband division manager, Jack Orpin, last January to do an assessment of the system, and to tell me what it would take to carry on for a few more years by spending money, or to build out a fiber optic to-the-home network, which is the modern technology that FiOS has. So that cost is between $2 and $7 million, depending on what you do. The discouraging thing is, in the last two years, we've spent about $100,000 marketing our high-speed internet business. I think you're all aware of the K.O. cable, and the boxing gloves, and, you know, all that effort we put in, but we basically gained zero customers. There's people love Belt who have Belt, 2,500 of them, but there's 13,000 people in town that don't have Belt for cable TV. So, and those people aren't willing to switch to us. So it didn't make any sense to me, or others, to borrow up to $7 million to build out this new high-speed internet network for 2,500 customers. It just didn't make any sense. So we approached Comcast, I believed, and my broadband manager believed, that the best thing for our customers was to transfer them to someone who was already in town. We had talked to other companies that were interested in buying our business, and we frankly didn't want to sell it to them, because we didn't want to continue to co-mingle their employees with ours, they wanted to use our head-end in Braintree Electric over at 150 Potter Road. Comcast, on the other hand, is pretty much everywhere in town that we are. Literally, all they have to do is move the drop that goes to your house from our system to theirs, and they have basically the same technology as far as the modems they use, and you'd be off and running minimum impact. So that's how we got to the point where we thought it was best to sell the business. We're very worried about reliability, you know, we take a lot of pride in the reliability we've had, obviously the electric side is very reliable, the broadband business is to the point where it's kind of held together with duct tape and Band-Aids, to be honest with you. And if we didn't start spending a lot of money, which would have had to cause us to raise our rates significantly to pay for that, which would have probably driven more people away, because you could still get high-speed internet for the same price we're charging from Comcast and from FiOS, it just didn't make any sense business-wise to carry on. So I know you have a couple of questions, and you gave me a heads-up on a couple of them, so I can answer those, but if you want to say anything before I?
No, I mean, I have, as I said, I have been a Belt customer forever. The customer service is second to none. I mean, you could call up, if somebody doesn't answer the phone right then, they are calling you literally within minutes and resolving the issue. I don't think any other broadband provider is going to provide that level of service. So as I said, as a customer, I am disappointed, but totally understand it from a business point of view.
Disappointment in getting out of the business.
And I know there's a lot of people who are not happy, but when you explained to me on the phone, the numbers, I was shocked at the, how few people, but as you mentioned, I do remember Verizon, their aggressive tactics years ago, going door-to-door, and people were enticed by that, and it's too bad. But anyway, so as I said on the phone, can you talk about what the rates will be with Comcast? People's email, because people have had emails forever, I know I have, in this service. And I know I found out about it because I got an email from Comcast that day saying, "Welcome to Comcast." I said, "I didn't sign up for Comcast, I deleted the email," and then I see your press release later that night, and I said, "Maybe I need to read that email."
Once working with Comcast, so we've come out with a common statement together, naturally they jumped the gun. They're a big monolith, they were supposed to have 800 numbers ready on a certain time, and they didn't. So my biggest concern was with the customers, trying to make sure the customers were taken care of more than the money, more than anything else, and, you know, they dropped the ball a couple of times, but we're getting there. What's happening now is, is a dedicated 800 number that people can call if they have The email is the biggest concern people have by far, so what we've done is we've set up a website, beltinternet.com, and this is in an email that we send customers, and we're going to really publicize this. If you go on that website, you are going to have to change your email by the end of March, from the belt.net email to a new one. You could pick Gmail, or you could get a Comcast.net email, or you could use your work email, you just need another email. You can go on this website, it directs you to a portal, and you can put in your belt.net email and your new email, and that will allow you to transfer all of your contacts and all of the emails in your inbox, so you won't lose anything. And until the end of March, anytime someone sends you an email to your belt.net email, it'll be pointed over to your new email. Unfortunately, by the end of March, you're going to have to change your email address, so it's four months, that'll give you time to like, if you have like online banking, you're going to have to go in and change the email address on that website. There's a few things you'll have to change, but we're trying to make it as painless as possible.
And you did say rates are locked in for six months, correct?
Well, probably a year.
A year?
Probably a year. Comcast is in no hurry to raise rates. I would assume you're going to get a phone call from Comcast to tell you when it's time to switch over. I would assume they're going to try and upsell you. They're going to want you to go back to cable TV, they're going to want you to get home security, your cameras, all that stuff, it's just marketing. All you have to say is no if you don't want it.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, want to make any comment? Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having us. I know this is a very difficult decision for us to make, as you said, you've been a longtime member, I've been a member since the inception of cable. And, you know, we went back and forth between us at meetings, trying to come up with ideas on how we might be able to sustain, you know, running the business. You know, some of our votes and decisions are not popular, but, you know, we're elected to make a decision based on what Ed Bill mentioned earlier about, you know, offering the best service in efficient and, you know, cost-effective energy. That's our charge. The cable was secondary, internet was secondary. When it was first installed, it was done to monitor our substations. And then we gave the residents an opportunity to have some competitiveness when Adams Russell was going floundering, actually. So it gave us, the residents, an opportunity to have choice, but, you know, it's very difficult, you know, as it tears at the heartstrings to keep it, but, you know, a sound fiscal responsibility requires us to make tough decisions, and, you know, in the best interests of the light department itself, this was the best choice to make and to move on. And I know it's not popular, but, you know, sometimes we have to make those choices. So again, thank you very much, and, you know... So again, thank you very much, and, you know, I appreciate the...
Anybody have any questions? No? Well, thank, oh, Councilor Sasha, go ahead.
President, you know, I, I just want to say that I know it doesn't matter what I say here, because this deal is already done, but if you just look up municipal internet, there are thousands of municipalities, there are at least a thousand municipalities that make this, that make municipal internet work. Towns around us, Milton, Quincy, Nantucket, South Hadley, every independent analysis that these towns have done have found the, the idea of municipal internet to be viable. I am, I am a longtime Beld customer. I, I love Beld, and I appreciate everything that you do, but I am very frustrated by this decision, as, as a lot of residents are, and I just find it a little bit hard to believe that, that with an existing infrastructure in place, Braintree is one of, one or two, or a very small number of municipalities that are going the other direction from, from lots of other towns and cities. So I, you know, I, I know it's, it's, it's a done deal, but I, I am a little frustrated and disappointed that you're here tonight telling us, and you weren't here a year or two ago telling us that this is something that's being contemplated. I, like President Hume, found out through a newspaper, and I read the Bright Ideas newsletter every month. I, I found this whole process to be a little frustrating. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Barica.
Thank you, President Hume, and thank you for being here tonight. My question, I know we had 2,500 residents, but I believe Beld also administers internet for the town offices and schools. So, I guess, is this going to result in the town needing to hire an IT professional to, because like President Hume said, you have a problem with your, your .gov or your Beld, I mean, it is like instantaneously fixed. And, and especially for the schools, and all the support Beld provided for the schools last year was invaluable, and, and, and not something a lot of communities could rely on. So I guess, where does this leave the town offices and the school department for internet?
All the town offices, with the exception of the schools, will see no change. Beld is still going to provide bandwidth at no cost to all the town offices. And we, and the IT piece of it is a separate contract between the mayor's office and, and Beld, the James Who helps and all the, our employees, Jim Boyle, that whole staff, that nothing's going to change. The schools are going to switch over to Comcast, and we're meeting with the schools and with Comcast to make sure that transition is as seamless as possible. Comcast offers high-speed internet to schools all over the country, so this isn't like something real new to them. They, they know how to do this. I know it's not Beld, but it, it, it's part of the deal.
All right. Well, thank you for being here and addressing my questions and letting everybody know how it went down. And as I said to you, I'm involved in acquisitions in my company, so I understand how it could not have been discussed previously, and, yeah, I think how Comcast jumped the gun, I think upset some residents. So, thank you both for being here. We appreciate everything Beld does.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business. Item 21027, mayor ordinance or to establish a centralized maintenance department or take up any action related to, related thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
It's been a motion by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Councilor Barica?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Uh.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. That is unanimous. We are in the public hearing. We had two of our committees take this up, so I'm going to first refer to Councilor Ringus, the chairman of the committee on ordinance and rules, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee on ordinance and rules met earlier this evening on Order 21027. We did receive a presentation from Solicitor Taub, from Mr. Arsenault, and we, the committee voted unanimously for favorable recommendation to the full council.
And now I would refer to Councilor Barica, chairwoman of the Ways and Means, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. This item was originally brought, brought forth by Councilor O'Brien, I think, close to a year ago, and I know it's been on three different Ways and Means agendas, so a lot of scrutiny has gone into this proposal. The committee met, we met last night. We had a lot of robust discussion, which, as you would expect, primarily centered upon the cost savings we expect to gain with this. And again, our committee as well is sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. We feel there will be efficiencies gained, both from having our, you know, maintenance team onsite, not reliant on outside contractors, and also will be gaining some absolute cost savings in terms of hourly wage reductions, when we're not paying extraneous fees for outside contractors as well. So, again, full favorable unanimous recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee.
The mayor's office wished to speak on this. Mayor Kukouris.
Thank you, President Hume, and members of the council. It was a great night tonight. I know it's late, but it was nice seeing all the championship teams and just like the old days. I just wanted to thank Councilor O'Brien, who was championing this effort through committee. It's something that we had talked about, you know, early on, before the pandemic. We have a, a great facilities department. We have Jim Arsenault here and Mike McGurty, as well as my chief of staff, Nicole Taub, who will do a presentation or explanation in a minute. I just wanted to just highlight a couple of points in regards to, you know, our facilities division, which over the last few years has really come together nicely, and you've seen some of the great work that they've done around town. After touring all of the schools individually and looking at each school from the ground up, and realizing that we needed to do something about it, I think the combined maintenance will allow us the opportunity to use these resources and have additional resources when there's emergencies, and try to eliminate the emergencies so we can start repairing these buildings instead of responding to breakages and things of that nature. And, you know, the high school was a perfect example of what our facilities division can, can do in combination with the school facilities. This still has to go through the school committee, which I'll, you know, I'll obviously be speaking in favor of when it gets to the school committee. But it takes both boards to put it into, into law, and I just have seen many different benefits over the last couple of months, and the amount of work that we can get done is one. And one of the other, you know, kind of silly things that happens is, our facilities division, or our DPW, is responsible for 10 feet off of the buildings. So, you know, and I'm sure that some of you folks realize that and have heard that before, and, you know, in order to take down, we've had issues at some schools where trees come down, and, you know, the trees, how far, are they off the building, are they in, in the realm of where the DPW would have to operate? So what, what this does is allows us to utilize our, our facilities, DPW, water and sewer division of DPW, paving of parking lots, there's so many things that we can bring together under the centralized system of facilities. So, I just want, I, I ask for your support firstly, and thank you for taking all the time of looking through these in the, in the committees and asking all the great questions. And I look forward to hearing presentation and hopefully a favorable vote tonight. Thank you, folks.
Seeing none, do, yep. Chief of Staff Taub, you want to comment?
Thank you, Madam President. It, it occurred to me as I was sitting that because this went to two committees, just about everybody here, with I think the exception, Madam President, of you and Councilor O'Brien, have heard the, the details behind this proposal and have seen the presentation. We are queued up to provide that this evening. I will defer to you whether you would like us to do that, or you'd like me to just provide some highlights that I think are noteworthy for the council and, and folks watching at home, and then we can certainly field any questions that may come from that.
Seeing, it's same as what you emailed us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I have reviewed. Everybody okay if we, if she just touches on the, okay?
Perfect. Thank you very much. A couple of things I just want to note, and they're items that we noted for the committee, but I do think they're important reminders for us tonight. This is the second of a multiple-step process that we have to undertake in order to consolidate the town and school maintenance departments. The first was adoption of the statute, which we did hear several months ago. And what we're asking for this evening is approval or authorization to move forward with the establishment of a centralized department. We're not approving an organizational chart, we're not approving staffing levels, we're not approving funding levels for that department. We're simply authorizing for the first half, the other half being the school committee, the ability to move forward with those next steps. And I think that that's important. And some of the information that was provided was done so, in an effort so that we're not talking in a purely theoretical manner, but we're actually looking at what these departments look like now and what they could look like in the future, in order to be what we believe will be a high, highly efficient and effective and successful department serving the town across all of our buildings between the school properties and the town properties. So I'll just cut right to the meat of it. We looked at actual invoices being paid by the school department in order to perform maintenance work, and working with Director Arsenault and Director McGurty, did an evaluation of what it would cost the town if we were able to perform that work in-house, which is a lot of what we currently do in our town buildings with the facilities team. So, by way of example, earlier this year, we repaired four lavatory sinks at the high school utilizing a third-party vendor. That vendor took 32 regular hours at $123.04 an hour for a total labor cost of $3,937.28. The materials utilized cost $1,845.21 for a total cost for the work of $5,782.49. Now, if we were able to perform that work in-house with our own staff, we estimate it would take approximately 12 hours compared to the 32 at the current hourly rate of $32 an hour for a total of $384 for labor costs. Materials for that work would have been $1,350 for a total of $1,734, a total cost savings to the town of over $4,000 if we were able to do that work in-house rather than utilizing a third-party vendor. A question came up at Ways and Means about whether or not the $32 an hour included any of the benefits associated with having in-house staff. It does not, but I took a look with HR at using a health insurance model of the Harvard Pilgrim Individual Option II Plan, basic life insurance, pension, and Medicare. In estimated, it comes to an additional $7.70 an hour, so still keeping the hourly rate at under $40 compared to the 123.
That was so impactful for the residents at home, if they can see what it did cost us and what it would be. If it's too much just to get to that one page, that's fine.
Queued up, I'm just going to ask Clerk Samino to log me in here. Thank you.
Yeah, that page in particular is very telling.
Well, and what that doesn't, what that doesn't reflect is that pride in ownership, which is an incredible value we see. A lot of the folks that we have working here grew up here. They went to these schools, their kids go to these schools, and there's, there's a non-monetary benefit that you realize by having longtime and current residents working on our buildings. I mean, you see that right here in the room we're sitting in, and how incredible not just Cahill looks, but all of the work we've done, kind of re-beautifying town hall, all done through our current staff. So this is the slide that I was just referencing about the lavatory sinks. We do have a couple of more, so a couple more of these kinds of slides. So, we had to shut down the water system and replace a section of the main feed line, utilizing a third-party vendor that was 24 regular hours at $80 an hour for a total of $1,920. If we were able to do that same work in-house, again, at that $32 an hour rate, we estimate it would take 16 hours for a total of $512, again, a savings of over $1,400 if we are able to perform that work in-house. And the last comparison that we did was focusing on the trades specifically. So, on both sides, there are currently some specialists employed. For example, on the town side, we have a plumber, we have an electrician, we have a painter, and having those specialties and that level of expertise in-house allows us to perform a lot of that work ourselves. So, there is an electrical contractor currently on contract with the schools that charges an hourly rate of $103. In addition to the hourly rate, every time that vendor comes to a building, we pay a $25 truck charge. Now, a truck charge at $25 one-off certainly is not going to have as great of an impact, but those dollars continue to add up the more we need to utilize these services. The electrical expert on the town side is an hourly rate of $32 an hour. So when we utilize those services, we're saving $71 an hour plus that $25 truck charge every time we utilize the vendor. For mechanical services, the overtime rate is $184.56 an hour, whereas the in-house overtime rate to perform that same work is $48 an hour, a savings of almost $137 an hour every time we need to utilize those overtime services. We talked a little bit about, you know, while the overtime expenses add up, but if you're drawing from a pool of experts in these trades, you're able to schedule them accordingly. So if there's work that needs to be done at the school that can't be done when class is in session, you're able to adjust schedules accordingly so that you have people working in the off-hours as part of their regular schedule, while you can also have people working during the traditional workday if there's work that's being done that's not going to disrupt the operations, which is what we see a lot of times on the town side. So, you know, that's, that's the dollars and cents, but this is certainly about more than just that. And what we're really looking to do, as the mayor said, you know, when he took office, he toured every school from boiler room to rooftop. And one of the first things that we would like to do if this consolidated department comes to fruition is perform a full assessment of all of the town buildings, including the schools, and truly create a multi-year action plan prioritizing the needs so that we can move from a reactive to a proactive maintenance program, a lot of which we've seen the successes of here on the town side in our building under Mike McGurty's direction. So, these are just some of the successes. You know, Doherty Gym, which is such a showpiece and has become such a beautiful building on the town side, and celebrated opening day this past weekend with the basketball program, and they were able to really take advantage of all of the improvements made in-house by our staff. You have the American Legion renovation. It's, it is amazing the difference it makes when you change a facade to a building. And we had a lot of folks here today for Pearl Harbor Day, and I, there was a facility staff member here, and it was so great to see the interaction between them because they were able to build that relationship through the work that was done at the Legion. We have an ADA accessible ramp at Doherty Gym, thanks to our in-house staff. We have, for folks who don't know, the animal control officer shares a space with Waymoth that's here on the town side, and the before and after speaks for itself. We have the Marge Crispin Center, which has benefited from significant enhancements. We have these great updated water dispensers that we're slowly building out throughout of our buildings. We have, again, Cahill Auditorium, one of my personal favorites. We have the Art Center, which we have effectively helped build from scratch as part of the renovation. So, the history here and our ability to, to maintain and enhance our properties, I would suggest speaks for itself, and certainly is something that will benefit the, the school side if we're able to create a consolidated department with this infrastructure in place. As the mayor mentioned, this still requires school committee review and majority vote approval, and hopefully we are able to, to gain that this evening and from the school committee so we can move forward with next steps to really build out the specifics of what a centralized maintenance department could look like. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all, I think a picture's worth a thousand words, that's why I wanted you to bring that up. to bring that up, because it was very telling, and to see the before and after pictures, to see what our facilities and DPW can do. The craftsmanship is incredible, so thank you for that. I also want to just say to Ordinance and Rules and Ways and Means, this has been going on well over a year. The amount of questions and thoughtfulness that went into this decision was quite extensive, so I appreciate all the work on both committees that everybody did and to the mayor's office and yourself, Chief of Staff Todd. I know you had a great deal of effort in, one, the presentation, but also the response to everyone's questions, so thank you for that. I will be supportive of this. I think I wasn't sure in the beginning and through all the questions that came about and through this presentation in particular that was sent to us. I know there's some concerns with the custodial staff and what that's going to mean for them. There are some schools that do operate throughout the summer with summer programs and whatnot, and so I know that was taken into account and all that. With that, anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Because we are still in a public hearing.
I may, just before. Thank you for those comments, President Hume, but I also have to say, you know, it's one thing for me to stand up here and talk about all the great work the facilities team does, but have to recognize Jim Arsenault, Mike McGirti, and their team because they're the ones that are getting dirty out there and really doing all of the hard work, and without them, I don't think we'd be standing here with this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Has been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, and now Counselor Ringus, a motion, please.
If I could just say one thing quickly, Madam President. Thank you. When I was doing my thank yous for the Ordinance and Rules, and again, thank you Solicitor Todd and Mr. Arsenault, I was remiss. Mike McGirti was there too and provided some keen insight on some of the things that would be going on and how it would work, so thank you for your explanations on those. And also, thank you, as we've said, this has been going on over a year. Thank you to Counselor O'Brien, who sort of initially brought the idea before the council, and I think it did go through a lot of discussion, because initially I was somewhat hesitant about this, there's some things that still concern me, but I do think that this is a way for us to move forward and really start to be less reactive and more proactive. So with that said, I would move under 21027, the creation of a centralized maintenance department, that the Department of Public Works, under the direction of the director, shall include a centralized maintenance department combining facilities, staff, for the purpose of maintaining all buildings and land owned by the town, including school buildings and grounds. The centralized maintenance department is hereby established as authorized by Section 4-5.3 of the Town Charter and the adoption of MGL Chapter 71, Section 37m by the Town Council. This ordinance shall take effect only after a majority vote in favor thereof pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 37m by the school committee. The consolidation of the maintenance departments may be revoked pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 37m by majority vote of the school committee or town council or both.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Sasha?
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you all. Moving on to item 21054, Planning Board, ZBA, the zoning bylaw text amendment or take up any action related thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on Order 21054?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Sasha? Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. We are in the public hearing. I will refer to Counselor Ringus, the chairman of the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ordinance and Rules met on November 10th of 2021 in regard to Order 21054. There was a favorable recommendation from Ordinance and Rules on a vote of two in favor, one opposed, and we did have one member absent that night.
Thank you. Anybody else, anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? Mayor Kokores.
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. I just wanted to recognize folks that are here from Planning Department, Melissa Santucci and Connor Murphy, as well as our chairman of the ZBA, Steve Carl, Vice Chairman Rich McDonough, Chairperson Erin Joyce, and Daryl McComme from the Planning Board. And I ask for your favorable vote on this as well, and I'm going to have Ms. Santucci Rossi give you an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. So I just want to do a quick background and then I can answer any questions that the councilors may have. So as most of you know, I've been with the town for about 17 years and served in very different roles, including providing review and support of zoning board applications to the zoning board of appeals. And when I first started working for the town about 17 years ago, the zoning board of appeal process included three different departments. It included the building department, who received the application and wrote the legal notices. It included the planning department, which served as the technical review of the application, which was then presented to the planning board, which held a meeting and discussed that application and that case as well with the applicant. And then it also involved the legal department. We had K&amp;P as a consultant at that time, and also we had in-house counsel Solicitor Carolyn Murray, who was doing that afterwards. And they would actually write the decision for the zoning board of appeals, and then the building department would mail out the notices. So three different departments to serve a process that primarily consisted of residents seeking to do additions and things to their homes. So who do I go to? Who do I talk to? How do I get answers? What's going on here? So in 2015, we decided to take a much deeper look at the process and sort of who was doing what and how it was happening, and the zoning planner position, which was created, which is currently held by Connor Murphy in our department. And what that job does at this time, and what that position was created to do, was to be a one-stop for people that were looking to file with the zoning board of appeals. It provided a single person dedicated to the administrative portion of that position, meeting with applicants, discussing things with the butters, talking to neighbors, setting up the meetings, reviewing the applications, and writing the decisions, and including follow-up post-decision during the construction phase, making sure that in fact the projects are being built out in accordance with the decisions and the plans. And the part that still currently remains in the former process that we had was taking this review that the staff does and going and asking the planning board, what's your opinion on this particular application, and seeking a recommendation. And the planning board, over the course of the years, has started to sort of minimize how that was going to happen. When we switched our form of government and we had a new planning board, excuse me, new planning board members, people were coming to the meeting. Again, there is no public notification for the planning board recommendation portion that currently takes place that we're trying to eliminate, and people would come to the meeting. I mean, this is a true story. People like, they didn't even know why they were there. Why am I here? The building inspector, I can't, I still remember. Mike McGirti told me to come here. So these people are showing up, they know they filed with the zoning board. Why am I at the planning board? Why am I going to two meetings? And the planning board would converse back and forth with this particular applicant, typically a homeowner, with no members of the public there and no butters were notified. So that was taking quite a bit of time, hour and a half, two hours sometimes, while everyone here knows how busy the planning board is. So the chairman at the time said, you know, why don't we just do the recommendations? Don't have these people come here. You know, it's kind of getting drawn out, and we have a lot of other things that we need to focus on here. So that was happening, and then it got to the point where the zoning planner, which currently happens now, the zoning planner does a quick snapshot and a very brief sort of overview of the application to the planning board along with their recommendation, and then nine out of 10 times, they would adopt, the planning board would adopt the staff recommendation. And then that gets forwarded on to the zoning board of appeals, and that's shared with them at that hearing as well. So that was, and that is the process that currently exists now, all contained within the planning department. And what we're looking to do, and what we are proposing through this text amendment, is to eliminate essentially one, two lines in the ordinance that says that you have to get this recommendation from the planning board. It's Section 135, 407E. And we feel as though the process is just so much more improved with this dedicated person, the review and the work that is done by Connor in reviewing these applications, talking with people, discussing things with the butters, has just been just a wonderful, wonderful thing for the people that are filing these applications. The other thing that also happens is there's a lot more guidance around when people come in and they want to talk about something. The staff spends quite a bit of time with them, saying, okay, well, if you do this, you're going to have to go to the zoning board of appeals, but did you think about doing this? Did you think about doing that? And something that I didn't have, and really didn't think was relatively important for the, when our meeting, was there used to be like over 100 zoning board applications every year, and now we're down under 50 applications over the last few years. So the time that is put in talking with these people and meeting with these people has significantly reduced the amount of variances that the town is giving out to people. So what that means is you're getting more and more additions, second floors, add-ons, mudrooms, garages, that are in conformance with the zoning bylaw. So that pretty much concludes the sort of the background. We talked to the planning board about this in March of 2021. It was a 4-1 vote to support sponsoring this amendment. Zoning Board of Appeals was a unanimous vote to support this amendment. So we're here this evening, obviously seeking your support in removing this section from the ordinance. There was a comment raised in Ordinance and Rules, a concern about the staff reports and the transparency related around those reports. I don't want to say it was 24 hours, maybe it was 48. The last two months of zoning, staff reports had went online, and the meeting that was following, the next available meeting, those were all put online as well. So little by little, we're doing much better on the website. All the plans are up, all the applications, all the decisions, and now all the zoning board staff reports are also up there as well. So I want to thank my chairs and my board members for coming here tonight to support us, and also Connor for supporting me and moving forward in this, and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santucci Rossi. Any questions, comments from the council? Counselor Barica?
Thank you, President Hume, and thank you, Director Santucci-Rozzi, and Mr. Murphy for being here tonight. I guess one of my questions, I didn't want to just make sure I understand this correctly. So the planning board, they may make a recommendation to the ZBA currently, but the ZBA is under no obligation to adhere to that recommendation. It's simply an administrative recommendation, is that fair?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay. Okay, so I took a lot, I initially was concerned that this would remove an important layer of oversight from the ZBA. However, it feels like this is much more of an administrative process and not one that influences outcomes. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
I don't want to lead the witness, but I want to make sure I was understanding it correctly as I was doing some of the legwork on this. And I also want to commend Mr. Murphy. I know for residents in District 5, I've had a lot of great feedback with people getting, working with you, Connor, so thank you for all of that. Those are all the questions I have. I think I'd be interested to hear if anyone else has.
Counselor Sasha.
Thank you, Director Santucci-Rozzi. So I was the vote against this in committee over the transparency issue, and I did look back at the last couple of ZBA meetings, and the staff reports are now out there, and you are committing to make that a part of the process going forward. I think that resolves the one outstanding issue for me, so I will support this. I will just make one comment, though, and that is I appreciate Member Grove's concerns about this, and I, you know, I think there's some merit to his argument that the planning board should have the ability to hear some of these, but I also think that could be handled through a planning board rule change to allow a member to bring something to the planning board if that was desired, because I agree that, you know, 90, 95% of the things going to the ZBA, most people don't care about. But as far as this amendment itself, I will support it at this point. Thank you.
Counselor. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Come on up, Mr. Carl. Welcome.
It's a pleasure to be here, members of the council. I wish you hadn't said that, Steve, that people don't care about zoning. However, the zoning board is an independent board. We do get recommendations from the planning board, but we don't have to follow them. However, as Melissa indicated over the history, and she did that very well, it started with the building department, and we'd have the building inspector come to our meetings. And then we were transferred under the planning board, and the planning board would hold meetings. And I know some people would think that people wouldn't get notices of the hearing, the petition. This doesn't eliminate any notice whatsoever. The planning board and about 16 other departments in town, the police, the fire, the traffic department, they all get notices. The water, the sewer, they all get notices of the petitions. So there's nothing lost. If one of the members of the planning board has an issue, I think Ms. Counselor Sasha is correct, they can bring it up at a hearing and make a recommendation to our department. And I must say that Connor Murphy and Jeremy before him really provide us with a lot of information and insight into each and every petition, and we look forward to the information that they give us. But again, we don't have to follow their recommendation either, but the information is very insightful, and I would say most of the time, the zoning board agrees with a lot of things that is recommended by Connor Murphy. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. And by the way, I've been involved with zoning since the mid-'70s, I hate to admit that, but I've been there for a very long time. So I would be glad to answer any questions that I can, if you have any.
Any questions? Counselor Sasha, go ahead.
Be careful, Counselor. To clarify.
Town loves talking about planning and zoning. I was specifically referring to the staff reports for something like a deck that it's hard to grab people's attention with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Carl.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing on Order 21054?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
This is to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Sasha? Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Now Counselor Ringus? Is there a motion on Order 21054?
There is, Madam President. I would move under Order 21054, the request of the planning board and zoning board of appeals to support amending the Braintree zoning bylaw. Appeals to support amending the Braintree zoning bylaw, chapter 135-407E, which states the Zoning Board of Appeal Permit Granting Authority shall not take final action on a request for variance or on a request for action on a nonconforming use until the Planning Board has submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeal Permit Granting Authority in writing a report with recommendations on the matter or until the expiration of 30 days from the date of notice to the Planning Board. By removing this section in its entirety, the zoning bylaw text amend petition has been recommended favorably by the Planning Board in its report to the Town Council dated November 9th of 2021.
It's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
No.
No. Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha. Eight in favor, one opposed.
Then order passes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah. Moving on to item 21057, may I have the tax rate classification or take up any action relative thereto? This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order 21057?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. It's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan, to open the public hearing. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, and with that, I will refer to Council Erica for the Chairwoman of the Committee of Ways and Means for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much, President Hume. So everybody's favorite topic, taxes, property taxes. So I know it's getting late, but just bear with me. I would like to give the members who aren't on Ways and Means and residents a little bit of context and some insight into our discussion last week on this. So our property taxes, that's the homes, the commercial, and the industrial properties in town, they are the single biggest contributor to our town's budget, comprising more than 70% of the operating budget. So it is an absolutely critical component to maintaining our strong community and providing the services that we count on and deserve. This year, our town has an almost $146 million budget, and the property taxes will contribute $105 million to that total. So that's the amount that we need to raise in order to balance the budget that we are legally obligated to do. So this year, as we discussed at the Ways and Means Committee, residents can expect to see about an 8% increase over last year, so it's about $414 more than last year on an annual basis. That's bringing the average residential tax bill in Braintree to just over $5,600. And as we discussed last week, there are really three main drivers for this increase. So the first, we all know, property values are rising fast. The real estate market is hot, and so our assessed home values are also going up by about 8%. The second thing, we'll remember, the debt exclusion. Voters overwhelmingly supported that in 2020. That is folded into this tax bill as well. And then the last component, a smaller piece, is because our home values are rising faster than our commercial and industrial values, the residences are absorbing slightly more of the overall tax obligation than we have in the past. So ultimately, and I'm sure that Director Spellman will speak to this, the state will set the tax rate. What we're going to be voting on and what the committee is sending to the council with a full unanimous recommendation is the tax rate shift. So the commercial and industrial properties pay a rate that's more than twice that of the residences. The small business exemption, meaning small businesses will pay the same tax rate as residences. The declinations, declining the open space discount, Braintree does not have any property that falls into that category. And finally, declining the residential exemption. So again, all four, we're sending to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. So thank you for that time.
Erica, with us tonight, we have members of the Board of Assessors Office, Robert Cusack, Susan O'Brien, and I believe Robert Conley, too, and Ed Spelman, the Director of Municipal Finances, here with us tonight. Anybody from the Board of Assessors or the Mayor's Office wish to speak? Mayor Kokoras.
Thank you, Madam President. When you look at the property values and the increase in our real estate market, Braintree is the place everybody wants to move to because of our great tax rate, because of our great schools, a great community. And the same is true with the business community. We are the most popular place on the South Shore, and fortunately, we're able to do this tax shift, which allows us to shift a large percentage of our taxes. I believe right now it's 36% of our taxes are paid for by our business community. So it's a wonderful situation because our tax rate is extremely low, under 10%, 9.85, and our business tax rate, even though there is a shift, is extremely low compared to other communities, not to mention the fact that we have our own electric light, water and sewer, and other amenities. So we are a sought-out community and continue to be because of all the great assets we have here and because of the fact that we have such great council and so many great opportunities for folks in the town. So I stand before you today to ask you to support the motions that we have presented before you. And, you know, in addition to those strengths, we also have continued our AA+ bond rating as well to allow us to borrow money at a very low rate. So once again, I want to thank Bob Brinkman, who can be here tonight, for all the hard work that he's done, and our Board of Assessors. They are unsung heroes in constantly working with homeowners and business owners and cases of abatements and reassessing property, et cetera, and they do a great job. And Ed Spelman, who is our chief financial person and has always done a great job and continues to do so. And I thank you for the time, and I also just wanted to congratulate both Council Connors and Council Sasha for their time on the board and thank them for all of their contributions. It was great working directly with both of yous as well. Thank you.
Kokoras, anybody else wish to speak? Any other councillor? Anyone from the, Council Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting the tax rate classification shift. I say this every time we do this. Living in Braintree, we all know that there's a lot of businesses in town. You can realize that when you try to drive from one end of town to the other during rush hour, we're impacted by the businesses. So it's a double-edged sword. It does help us with our taxes, but it also impacts our lives sometimes. So I think it's the right thing to do to shift the tax rate onto the commercial and industrial, and I fully support this, as I have every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Anybody else? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing, Council Ryan?
So moved.
Who's seconded? Who did that? There's been a motion by Council Ryan, seconded by Council Erica. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus. He's not present. Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one not present.
Thank you. Now, Council Ryan, is there a motion on order 21057?
Yes. Motion to be, for the, to apply the tax rate classification shift, motion be it ordained that the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, adopt the recommendation of the mayor and the Board of Assessors to approve the classification tax rate shift of 175% to be applied to commercial, industrial, and personal property. So moved.
It's been a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council Erica. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin. Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus. Absent. Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Council Ryan?
Regarding the small business exemption, motion to approve the small business exemption as recommended by the mayor and the Board of Assessors in a memorandum to the Town Council dated November 23rd, 2021, and is filed with the office of the town clerk. So moved.
Motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Erica. Roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus. He's not here. Council Ryan. Council Sasha. Eight in favor, one absent.
That is approved. Council Ryan.
Number three, regarding the open space discount, motion to continue to adopt the recommendation of the mayor and the Board of Assessors as outlined in the memorandum to the Town Council dated November 23rd, 2021, is filed with the office of the town clerk to decline the open space discount. So moved.
There's been a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council Erica. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty. Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus. Absent. Council Ryan. Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
That passes. Council Ryan.
Regarding the residential exemption, motion to continue to adopt the recommendation of the mayor and the Board of Assessors as outlined in the memorandum dated November 23rd, 2021, and is filed with the office of the town clerk to decline the option of the residential exemption. So moved.
Motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council Erica. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin. Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus. Is absent. Council Ryan. Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you. Moving on to item 21058, the mayor CPA appropriation, request for appropriation of Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order 21058?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council Erica. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin. Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus. Is absent. Council Ryan. Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Public hearing is open. I will refer to Council Erica, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much, President Hume. So there are two motions essentially that make up this proposal. So this is the first component, and just to let residents know again, this is seeking funding from our Community Preservation Act funds. So this money does not come out of the operating budget. It is a separate fund that is paid for in part by a 1% surcharge on our property taxes and in part by the state. And it can, this money can only be used for open space and recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So we have not spent much of our Affordable Housing Fund and have close to about $1 million in that component of our Community Preservation Act funds. So the committee met last week. We discussed this project at length and are sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. To let you in on some of that discussion, this project, it will add to Braintree's affordable housing inventory in perpetuity. It's important to note that this project will help provide housing options for middle-income residents. As we just discussed, the housing market in Braintree is expensive, so this provides another option. It's an ideal location. People can walk to, walk or bike to services and public transportation, and Braintree residents will be given preference when the affordable units are available as part of the lottery. So the only thing that was not in the notes that we did discuss, these apartments unfortunately are not ADA accessible because this is a renovation of an old building and not new construction. So with all that said, the committee is sending this to the full council with a favorable unanimous recommendation.
Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. I fully support this motion. I want to thank the mayor's office. I want to thank everyone that's been involved with this. It's wonderful that we're spending community preservation funds for affordable housing on units that are, they're in a great location. It's the perfect part of town that we should be doing this type of work. It makes total sense. It's going to help us get to safe harbor, and I can't say enough good things about this. This is wonderful. I fully support it.
Thank you. Anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? Mayor Kokoras.
Thanks once again, Madam President, councilors. I just wanted to take a moment just to thank Steve Sasha. This, you know, there was a phone call that took place early in 2020, I think even before the pandemic, and, you know, Steve had, Council Sasha had mentioned Windjammer, and Windjammer was, had been recently purchased at that time, and, you know, the question was, you know, can we buy down the units 25% and be able to count the 73 units towards our inventory and create these 19 affordable units? And that's what kind of triggered the discussion. And from there, you know, Melissa Santucci was, you know, tasked with, we put together a meeting with Matt Gollinger and Melissa Traff from Windjammer, and it was an extremely positive meeting. And from that point, you know, nothing, nothing is done quickly in government. It takes time. And, you know, Melissa was able to, you know, work directly with them, and it was a great working relationship. But I want to, you know, especially thank Steve for really initiating this and getting us to look at it, and I appreciate that. What this has allowed us to do is bring our numbers after the 2020 census, which was, you know, significant, it was a significant increase in our population, which is great. It'll bring us to 9.5%. And we're getting close to that 10% number, and that's one of all of our goals, I know, to get there. But I will say that one of the, one of the things that really made a huge impact was to see the work that the owners of Windjammer have done to the property. They have created a beautiful outdoor environment, family area, play areas, and as far as the overall units, looking at the renovations that were done, they've just opened up these units and put in all-new appliances, granite counters. It's an open floor plan. It is absolutely beautiful what they've done there. So this is a great way for us to invest this housing money and create affordable housing. So I thank you for taking the time. I thank you once again, Council Sasha, and ask for your favorable vote on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other councillor wish to speak on this? Council Connors. I actually have a question that's come up since the Ways and Means Committee, and it was brought up by a resident. And it was brought up that there's concerns of a large concentration of affordable housing in the East Braintree area versus diversity throughout the town. Could somebody just speak to that as far as where there is other affordable housing within the town of Braintree? I don't know what Council Ryan was saying over there. It's a great part to put this in, but there was some concern about that. So if someone could speak about that and just clarify where there is affordable housing in the town of Braintree, and that it is diversified or not diversified, or if there really is a concentration just in the East Braintree area.
Thank you very much, Council, for the question. I don't have with me this evening the full subsidized inventory. I can share that tomorrow with Sue Simino, and she can circulate it. I know some of the councilors already have that information.
I know some of the councillors already have that information. We have affordable units scattered all over town. We have, if I can start up in the Highlands, we have things up at Roosevelt, we have units on Grove Street at Alliance and Logan Park, we have affordable units at Washington Hancock, which is 145 Hancock Street, I believe, a condominium development. If we kind of segue a little bit this way, we have some affordable units at 20 Pond Street. We have affordable units all the way down Pond Street, 614 Pond, which is Reservoir Crossing. Those are condominium units. Then we go up West Street. We have some affordable apartments up that end, rental units at, I believe it's 800 West Street, which is the Ridge. Please don't quote me on these addresses. I'm just trying to, I know pretty well, but I just, not everything. We have some individual scattered throughout the community, which are, we have some group homes. We have some DMH units here and there. Most of those addresses are confidential, but they are scattered throughout the town, and we'll be sharing those addresses this evening. And if we're kind of in this area, we have some units, if I start to move down Washington, we have all the way in North Braintree, we have Independence Manor, 1, 2, and 3, completely affordable, all the units up there. We have three affordable condominiums at 36 Independence Ave. And then when we move over to East Braintree, we have some units at Braintree Village, we have some units at Skyline, and we will now have some units at Windjammer. So there are units in East Braintree, but I wouldn't say that they're necessarily concentrated. And then if we kind of shift back and head up towards Waymouth, we also have Turtle Crossing, which is a condominium ownership affordable, there's an affordable ownership component within that development. So that might not be absolutely everything. They are somewhat scattered throughout the community, but I can make that list available to anybody that would like the specific addresses and type of unit and number.
I just wanted to make sure that there were concerns brought up, so I just wanted them addressed here so that we could make sure everybody understood it's not just in East Braintree.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. America, and Council Ryan.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, there is two affordable units coming up for lottery in South Braintree Square, the Hampton House. So that's another spot in, right downtown.
Yep. So Ryan?
What I meant is it's, they're existing units, and it's like a no-brainer that it's, it's a great place for affordable housing. It's right near Waymouth Landing and public transportation, and it's exactly what we should be doing. So I think anybody would be hard-pressed to argue that it's not the right thing to do.
Council Sasha?
Madam President, I just wanted to, to add, I did have this conversation with the mayor a long time ago, and I greatly appreciate from that brief conversation, a year and a half of work that Director Santucci-Razi and the mayor and his staff did to actually get this to work. I mean, the other thing is, it's, it's coming up next, but there are not that many units, there are not that many developments that are this large that this could be done at. And that, the $1.1 million of Turtle Crossing money has been sitting there unused for over 10 years now, or close to 10 years now, and there's finally a use for it. It is required that it be used for affordable housing, and there's finally a use for it. I think this is a great one. And, and this is allowing Windjammer to, to redevelop the property. They're adding amenities for the residents and fixing up every unit, the affordable ones and the regular market rate ones. So this, you know, everybody makes out here. Thank you.
Anybody else? If anybody has not had the chance from the public, I suggest you look at the documents. Are, were these pictures put online? The pictures, as Council Sasha said, the improvements, and as the mayor stated, they're, it's beautiful to the grounds and to the units themselves. So great job by all involved. I will be supportive of this. Great project, great use of CPA money. Anyone from the public who's left? Thank you, everyone, for being so patient. We are here late. Lot on the agenda.
I just would like a second, Madam President, just to thank the mayor and the folks from Windjammer for sort of putting this project in my lap, and the mayor just looking at me saying, you know, you can get it done. And we did. And it, you know, it did take a little bit of time, but the relationship that we've built with this particular property owner and what he's providing for the community is, is really just, it's just awesome. It really is. It really is. They're there, they really should be commended for, for meeting week after week after week, ironing out all the details, and really just being a very genuine group of people that frankly really care about, about their investment in the community and their product.
Hear that. So I appreciate you sharing that with us, and it is, it's great to hear. There's so much time and effort that goes into everything that comes before us, and not everybody knows the details that go behind it, all the hard work that goes into it. And to hear like the partnership and how successful it is, that's even better. So with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council America. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Council America?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus? Absent. Council Ryan? Council Sasha? Eight in favor, one opposed. I'm sorry, one absent.
Madam President? A motion for order 21058, motion that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44B of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, with the total appropriation of $993,856, with $700,000 from the Housing Fund and $293,856 from the Unreserved Fund to fund a portion of the costs associated with the memorandum of understanding that the details and the requirements of the Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project Assessors Map 3007 plot 2, said funds shall be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council America. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Council America?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus? Is absent. Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha? Eight in favor, one absent. That passes. Thank you very much. Moving on, item 21059, the mayor requests for authorization to spend $1,102,960 from the Turtle Crossing Settlement Fund for Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order 21059?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council America. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Council America?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus? Is absent. Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha? Eight in favor, one absent. Okay. Now we'll refer to the Council America, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume, and thank you to Council Sasha, who gave the explanation for this component of the funding, so I won't repeat that. But just to say, the Ways and Means Committee fully supports the use of these funds. We are sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Council America. Anyone from the mayor's office want to further elaborate on this? Any councillor? Anyone from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's been a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council America. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Council America?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus? Is absent. Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha? Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. What is your name, Miss? That was just to close, sorry.
Yep.
Is there a motion on order 21059?
Madam President, motion that the town council authorize the town acting through the mayor to expend funds in the amount of $1,102,960 in the Turtle Crossing Settlement Fund to partially fund the execution and recording of a deed restriction on the property located at 79 Shaw Street Assessors Map 3007 plot 2 that designates at least 25% of the units as affordable described in the memorandum of understanding for the Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project. So moved.
There's been a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council America. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Council America?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus? Is absent. Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Moving on to new business, there is none. Moving on to referrals. Council Ryan?
Madam President, refer to the committee on Ways and Means, the following three items. 21060, mayor authorization to accept donations or take up any action related thereto. 21061, mayor authorization to enter into grant agreement with Norfolk County for funding under the American Rescue Plan Act or take up any action related thereto. 21062, mayor borrowing authorization, tri-town water treatment plant, or take up any action related thereto. So moved.
Motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council America. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please. Council America?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?[1693.65]